As long as you're okay, we'll be ready to start. Just let me know when, and make sure they give me the high sign upstairs. You're good? Good? Okay.
Action.
Good evening, everybody. This is the August 13th, 2014 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We're going to begin it with the Pledge of Allegiance, and you're all invited to join in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start the meeting tonight, I would just like to make a motion for a resolution that will honor Mr. Frank Derubias, our town planning director, who is going to be retiring on August 29th after, how many years, Frank, with the town?
Forty.
After forty years with the town. Mr. Derubias has been the planning director. He's at these meetings, he's at the meetings of the town board, he's at the meetings of the zoning board of appeals. Anyone who's ever come to any of our meetings or watched them on television can readily see that Mr. Derubias' knowledge of many areas of land use and land use regulation by the municipality is very broad, very wide, and very deep, very full and complete. He is very well versed in all the various technical and legal areas that we deal with. He provides great support and assistance to the board members, and I wish him best of luck in his retirement. Thank him for all his assistance and support that he's provided through the years. And if anybody wants to add anything to the motion, they can at this time. If not, they just need to have a second.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd happily second that motion. I've known Frank over my eight months. I was a member of this board to be the consummate professional who's always handled his job with dignity and grace in the face of adversity. Smithtown, with his departure, still faces challenges, but we also face opportunities. Those challenges, I think, will be lesser thanks to your service, and are the opportunities that we will have far greater than they would have been had we not had your 28 years of service as planning director and your years of service before that. So, Mr. Chairman, it is an honor for me to second that motion, and...
Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard regarding this?
Frank, I'll second the motion as well. I really enjoyed working with you, even though we did not agree 100% of the time. I enjoyed debating with you, and I have immense respect for your experience and knowledge in municipal and land use areas. So, good luck in retirement.
Thank you very much.
And Frank, I'd like to second that also, and wish you the best of luck. It's been a great learning experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I also would like to add my personal appreciation for guiding me as I came on the board. I'm here about a year and a half, just about, and it was very helpful. We spent two, two and a half hours just getting acquainted, and your knowledge is very broad in the area. And I would add, I admire your handling things with tenacity at times when public opinion might run up against what you think is best, and you've stood your ground and always told the people in this board what you thought was best. So, thank you.
And, you know, Frank, time for retirement comes for everybody, of course, and the people of the Town of Smithtown are losing a very valued employee and a very valuable resource. And I just say thank you and best of luck. I think everybody has seconded the motion, so since we have four seconds, I'll just say, "All in favor?"
Aye.
Aye. Of course, we have none opposed, and the motion carries and the resolution is adopted. Frank, good luck, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I will tell you that I will miss going to these meetings, even though we've had many discussions, as Adam has said, I will miss them. And I do sincerely, I said this to the paper, and I do believe this despite the fact of our many arguments, and us and other board members and everything else, I do believe that the people who serve on these boards do have the best interests of the town in mind, even though we sometimes argue indifference. I sincerely believe that, but I thank the board for your kind words.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, Alex, let's roll.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first item on the agenda this evening, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Under Part One, Item 1, 2011-01, All Seasons Motor Lodge. Item 2, 2012-04, Storybook Homes. Item 3, 2012-02, Carlson Associates. Item 4, 2013-06, Haddington Company. Item 5, 2014-02, Sun Enterprises. Item 6, 2014-03, 773 Scholar Estates. Item 7, 299 Archer Hills. Item 8, 225 Sahami Platt. Item 9, 288 Olivia Estates. And under Part 2, Item 10, 2010-06, KVC Holdings. Item 11, 911A, Glen Hill Northern. And you'll note that for item number 7, Archer Hills, we have an item in correspondence requesting adjournment, and these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on any of the matters that were just read regarding which the Planning Department is recommending an adjournment? Seeing none? A motion, please?
Motion to adjourn items 1 through 11 as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda, under Part 3, Item 12, is an extension of a performance bond approval for Flynn Platt, number 1101. The applicant requests a retroactive extension of the performance bond to expire on May 7, 2016, in order to obtain more time to complete construction and all necessary improvements. The applicant received conditional final approval for this two-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on May 7, 2008. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $89,405 was approved by the board and subsequently signed by the chairman. The applicant submitted the bond monies and all related materials to the town, and the town board accepted the performance bond on July 15, 2008. Planning Board approval for this performance bond expired on May 7, 2010. On April 3, 2013, the Planning Board granted the applicant two retroactive two-year extension of performance bond approval, bringing the approval to May 7, 2014. The applicant submitted a performance bond extension application on April 3, 2014, to the Planning Department, and the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The applicant has indicated that he needs more time to complete the project. The engineering, highway, and traffic safety departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request and have determined that the bond amount is sufficient to cover all remaining improvements. Planning has no objection to the applicant's request. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Flynn Platt, number 1101, for a two-year period from May 7, 2014, to expire on May 7, 2016.
Is there anybody representing the applicant on this matter? Please give your name, address, and relationship to the applicant for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm the owner, Lawrence Flynn, 8 Main Street, Kings Park, New York.
Okay. Did you hear the analysis read into the record by the Planning Department?
Yes.
And have you heard, you heard the resolution that they're proposing that we pass?
Yes.
Any problems with it?
No.
Okay. Anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this particular matter? None? Okay. Any questions from any member of the board regarding this particular matter? None? Then we would need a motion, please?
In the matter of Flynn Platt, number 1101, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? The motion carries unanimously, and the resolution is adopted.
Mr. Flynn, if you would, with the affidavit of posting?
Thank you.
Which matter is that?
I believe it's the last matter, the...
Oh. I think it's okay.
The report on the master plans with regard to the streets is...
Under other matters?
Under other matters, yes. That's the one that Don King wants. I think so, yeah. Yes. That's the one that Mr. King has stated that he is of interest in.
Mr. King, you have an appointment? You need to be here? Okay. We're gonna take you out of order.
Okay.
Number, Alex, go to number 22, please.
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, the next item we'll discuss on the agenda is under Part 3, Item 22, a memo regarding the report by the Planning Department on a master street plan for an area of Nescantet. The Planning Department is asking the Planning Board to adopt a master street plan to guide development in an area of Nescantet between Southern Boulevard and Lake Avenue South that best serves the public interest. At the last Planning Board meeting on July 16, 2014, the Planning Department presented the Planning Board with a report concerning the need for a master street plan to address conflicting subdivision layouts in an area of Nescantet. After studying issues of connectivity and access in this area, the Planning Department's report recommends that Hurst Stone and Leary Lanes be connected with Oak Run Drive and Westminster Court South as presented in the attached sketch. At the last meeting, Representative for Lot B objected to this plan because it would require this lot to be developed with a 90-foot-long tap street to interconnect to the adjacent parcel. At the board's request, the Engineering Department has prepared a cost estimate for this improvement. Also attached to your packet is the original map the applicant submitted as part of the application for Leonard's Land. This matter was adjourned to give the board the opportunity to conduct a site visit and consider the Planning Department's report. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby adopts a master street plan for an area of Nescantet between Southern Boulevard and Lake Avenue South, providing for the connection of Hurst Stone and Leary Lanes with Oak Run Drive and Westminster Court South in a matter substantially consistent with the Planning Department's sketch dated July 16, 2014. All future subdivision in this area shall provide rights of ways that are in substantial compliance with the intent of this plan. And attached, you have a sketch of that recommendation as well as the map for Leonard's Land.
Okay, now, Alex, you have a memo from Mark Riley in the Engineering Department, which is with the packet?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And on the first page of that memo, there's a list of items and prices, and a total price of $33,210.50, correct?
Yes.
And that is to construct a 90-foot section of roadway off of Oak Run Drive at Westminster Court?
Yep, and they base that off of the map you see here on the screen.
Okay.
That tap street there.
And the next page, there's also some more items and another total cost of $22,725, and that's a rough estimate for additional engineering items that would be included in the PBE for Leonard's Landing?
Correct.
Okay. And with that being said, Mr. King, you here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes. Thank you. Donald King, 75 East Main Street, Kings Park, New York. At the last meeting, if you recall, my client didn't want to put the road in because we believe, if we could go back to the other slide, there's ingress and egress from off this cul-de-sac that would open up this property, so there's no need for us to put that in. I revisited the cost with Jim Fox, and he came up with a number of $40,000 to $50,000 to put that section of the road in, as long as we don't have to put the cul-de-sac, because you're always faced with the possibility of drainage. I have some surveys I colored up that show what the connection would do, and I'll hand those up.
Thank you.
So, it's your call. My client doesn't want to do it. Frank wants us to do it, but I believe they can get in the other way. Ultimately, we're not cutting those lots off. This has been going on, not because of Frank, but this has been going on for eight years, and I want to move forward. I told you last time, I started this in kindergarten. I don't think Frank was here even then.
It was only a couple of years ago, though, right?
Yes. Anyway, if you would consider our application, I'd appreciate it.
So, you're requesting that the proposed construction or connection not be made?
Yes.
None at all?
None. We don't need it for our five-lot subdivision, and the parcel A and Lot A will have frontage on that proposed, off that proposed cul-de-sac. It's just another 40 or 50 big ones for the client.
And does that approximate what the Planning Department's estimate was?
Frank, I think, said 33. Jimmy thought 40 to 50, and he's done a number of them, including the...
There's two things here.
Yeah, we have two pieces.
We have about $55,000.
All right, so that's the number. Jimmy's right, 40 to 50.
Well, if I can may add, there, regardless of what the applicant discusses on the road, the second part is the applicant will be bonded for certain things on this subdivision, no matter what, street trees, breakage of curbs, and other items. So, the second part is what he would be bonded for in any event. The issue that we separated out was that the applicant claimed a very high cost, I forget the exact number, at the last meeting with regard to that stub street, and we said that it was not as expensive as the applicant claimed, so we separated out that particular cost. If the applicant was to do this subdivision, they would be bonded for the things on the second page regardless.
The good thing is, we're now all in the same range. We're talking about $50,000, not $150,000, if members...
Correct. I revisited that.
Well, keep in mind that what we're discussing here is bonded. It's not necessarily what may cost the applicant. Some of these items, such as when we're dealing with curbing, is to protect the town in the event of construction. If the curbing is not destroyed that's existing, then the applicant may be bonded for it, but may not have to put it in. And likewise, if the street trees are already in and they're not damaged or whatever, then the applicant will likewise not have to replace those. A bond amount is merely what we anticipate the full cost might be if we have to replace everything that's on there. That is not what, I think, the difference between Mr. Fox's estimate and between our costs are, from a builder's point of view, that's his out-of-pocket total expenses that he anticipates for this particular area, as opposed to what our cost estimate is, is like an insurance policy. This is what we wish to insure for. So, it's two different things, but talking about the same items.
Okay, now, Mr. King, the document you just handed up to us, which you said was a survey?
Yes, it shows, the red shows the road.
The red shows where the road...
Would be required over my client's property to hook up, or Oak Run.
Mr. Chairman, could I also ask?
Yes.
The applicant has a subdivision application before us, and what we're asking this evening is if the board adopts a road network system. The issue, and I can understand the applicant's point of view about whether to build a cul-de-sac or not build a cul-de-sac, and this would add cost onto it, but that really becomes a subject of the subdivision when it's presented, that particular issue. And given the fact that this particular meeting is only on the road network system, I would, I think we understand what Mr. King's objective is, but I think that would be the subject of the public hearing on his particular subdivision as to whether or not we have a temporary cul-de-sac or not, because the Highway Department would be the one that would want to review that.
That was my question. If we adopt this, what they're asking us to, how does this prejudice you?
Pardon me?
If we adopt what they're asking us to adopt, how does this prejudice you, your client?
Well, he's out whatever the road cost is that I don't think he need, and then down the road, the town may determine that we need the cul-de-sac, which is going to be an additional cost.
But that, you gotta go through subdivision anyway.
I have to go through the subdivision. I've been on this eight years, which is pretty fast for Smithtown.
And the parcel we're talking about, future subdivision, that's parcel B?
Yes. Yes.
That's your client's property, right?
Yes. I'm only kidding, Frank.
No.
Okay.
You're, obviously, the intent here is to try to make sure that there is sufficient access to the areas that are going to be developed in the future, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And the Planning Department has put forth a plan for that to happen. You, Mr. King, on behalf of your client, are opposed to that plan. Do you or your client have any alternative plans that might be able to further the same goal that you might not object to, as much as you're objecting to this plan?
Well, this lot and this lot will not be cut out when this proposed addition is put in. You don't need us. That's what I'm saying, for the future. If they have frontage here, if this lot is cut out, they can come off this cul-de-sac, and they can bear the expense of getting to these two parcels. So, you don't need us down the road.
So, you're saying that parcel, the people who develop parcel A should be the ones to open up that area?
They should eat the cost. Why should my client pay 40, 50, whatever the number is, when there's an alternative method that will work? I could understand if A was going to be cut off completely, then I would agree with Frank, but they're not cut off completely. There's ingress and egress off that cul-de-sac.
So, your position, and correct me if I'm wrong, is B, your client's property, has access onto...
Oak Run.
It looks like the road...
Oak Run.
Oak Run, and also Lake Avenue South?
Yes.
Okay. And there's a house, it looks like some structure on parcel A, which has access to Southern Boulevard?
Correct.
And so, without their plan, all of the existing properties would have access to a road?
Correct.
And it would only be potentially if Part A was developed that this road would be needed?
Correct.
So, you're saying that it's really not going to be needed until Part A is developed, so it could be put in, but your client shouldn't have to pay for it now because of the fact that he wants to develop parcel B, because parcel B is not really being benefited by this proposed connection? It's really parcel A?
Correct.
And I think the argument, and correct me if I'm wrong, may have been made at the initial hearing, that when the Oak Run development was put in, Oak Run, the Oak Run developer had to make, improve that area, make that road, and that benefited your client, so that now you, your client, should pay, in other words, the owner of another property put in a road that benefits your client, so now you should be made to pay for, your client should be made to pay for a road that doesn't benefit your property, but benefits yet a different property.
Well, Oak Run is, the bond is being revoked as we speak, and Oak Run, he had to put the road in because he was developing that property across from parcel B, across Oak Run. He had no choice. But if there's an alternative, I don't think we should have to pay for it. That's all I'm saying.
I understand.
That's the issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could clarify, I think what Mr. King is also saying is that if Lot B is being developed in the way he would like, this connection wouldn't be possible. They intend to develop this as a five-lot subdivision with no road here, and there would be a home or a yard here that would make that connection impossible in the future.
Is that correct, Mr. King?
Pardon me? What was that again?
If this is developed as a five-lot subdivision, this connection wouldn't be possible, this connection here crossing Lot B.
Well, the lot, or the area to the left would connect up to Oak Run.
Right. This would all be developed.
You're cutting down the size of the lot, and I'm concerned somewhat with the Health Department requirement of 20,000 square feet, but there's no need, I see, for this particular addition when you have an alternative method. If A was cut off, I'd say, "Look, I wouldn't be here."
Is Mr. Wallack correct, however, that you intend to have a five-lot subdivision on parcel B, and if that is done, there will be no access to Westminster Court and Oak Run, that corner there? Is that correct? I think that's what he's saying, right?
Yes.
There'll still be access for the, I have a subdivision map that shows access for the five lots to Oak Run.
I believe what the chairman's asking, that there wouldn't be access from parcel A.
That's correct. That's correct.
Well, there wouldn't be access from parcel A up to Westminster Court, but would parcel, let's say the road ended at the borderline there of the property above parcel A and parcel B, then parcel A would have access out this way?
Correct.
See what I'm saying?
But there would be no connectivity between...
There would be no connection, correct. There would be no connection.
For emergency vehicles or whatever, or traffic flow.
To parcel A, they'd have to come in through Leary Lane.
So, that should be their problem when they make the application.
See, but it's not their problems. People who, the folks who built the Oak Run development, they put the road in. Now, it's your turn, or your client's turn, to make this a viable network.
According to Frank, not according to me.
Yeah, I don't know if I necessarily agree with the fact that because his property, his client benefited from something that some other developer had to do, now he's compelled to spend money to benefit yet a third person. I don't know if, to me, I don't know if that really flies.
I agree.
I think it's a better traffic plan, the way it's proposed.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean I have to...
I mean, I understand you willing...
You don't have to agree with what, I mean, I know it's his last hurrah.
But it's not yours.
You can say something nice to him, but you can't...
I am, I didn't say anything bad. It wasn't, if it wasn't for Frank, I'd be on welfare.
Frank, is there a way, is there a way for this to be done the way you want it without Mr. King's client having to pay for it?
No.
No free lunch.
The cost element is one that's determined by the board. The, if you wanted to believe, if the board was of a mind to believe, and I do not support this, but if the board was of a mind to say that all the cost should be borne by the parcel A, then what I would say, that the applicant should dedicate the land and let parcel A complete that particular road frontage. However, I think when we put a road system, like the purpose of this meeting is to determine what is the best road system for that area, independent of the subdivisions. We're asking the board to take a look, and in your judgment, and you make the final decision, where the road should be as the best road system for that area. Once the board makes that decision, regardless of whatever the arguments are at that particular point, this is the system that the board feels is the best that's in place. This is a fundamental review of the board. I mean, we do a lot of subdivisions, but the issue comes down to, what is the job of the Planning Board, is to figure out the physical design of the community, and you make the final choice. I've made my pitch, Mr. King has made his pitch.
Isn't there a way, though, I think your proposal there is, makes the most sense in terms of emergency vehicles and access and things like that, but I get his argument that, you know, why should his client have to bore all the costs? Isn't there some way, a third alternative?
Didn't you just mention something about his client dedicating? When you say dedicating the land, you mean dedicating the strip of the proposed connection that goes across parcel B?
Yes.
Okay. And then he would just dedicate that, under what you just said, to the town in anticipation of the connection being built through there in the future at someone else's expense?
That's correct.
And that would, if that was acceptable, that would allow the system of the roads to be developed the way you want and would not require Mr. King's client to pay for it?
Right.
I'll approach my client. I think I'd recommend that to him.
But you have to talk to him about it.
Yeah.
Any problem if we adjourn this to allow you to do that?
Yeah, and I'll just let you guys know, and then you can make a decision. You know, I'll send you a letter.
And you can thank Frank for the idea, too.
I can thank Frank.
He said last hurrah.
Frank, you going to insignia?
I want to stress, Mr. King, it's not my recommendation, but I was asked to provide this.
We understand it's not his recommendation, but I think...
All right, I'll talk to my client.
Pull it for you, Frank. Pull it for you.
But I do think it seems to serve the interests of what the planning department wants to accomplish by allowing the road to be built the way they want it to be built, and it also relieves your client of the obligation of having to pay for it. Because I think there is some merit to your argument, Mr. King, that just because the builder of Oak Run had to build a road that happened to benefit your client, to me, that's just like the luck of the draw.
Yep.
And now I don't see that imposes an obligation on your client to pay for a road that benefits a third party. I don't think it should work that way.
Let me check that out, and I'll get back to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking me, and thank the gentleman here for allowing me to participate at the beginning. Thank you very much.
Before we let you go, is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this application? Okay? Anything else you want to say, Mr. King?
Good luck, Frank. When are you going to be able to testify for me and Vinnie? How many years do you have to wait? Thank you again.
Okay, so we have a motion on this matter, please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, none, so adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda we'll discuss under Part III, item 13, is a waiver request for Catherine Estates, number 1127.1. I'm going to begin on the second page of your memo where it reads, "August 13th update." This request to waive the requirement of installing 121 linear feet of sidewalks, four street trees, and a storm pool within the subdivision known as Catherine Estates 1127.1 was first heard on July 16, 2014. At that meeting, the board approved the waiver for the storm pool for the existing home, because storm pools are not typically bonded for existing homes. With respect to the request to waive the requirements for the sidewalks and street trees and reduce the cash deposit with the associated amount, the planning department advised the board that it has been the past practice of the board not to entertain waivers of public improvements until the work on a subdivision is complete or nearing completion. Because the proposed house in the subdivision has not yet been built, the planning department recommended that this matter be adjourned until the proposed home is built. This matter was adjourned to tonight's hearing for an onsite inspection, and so that all planning board members may be present. The planning department's recommendation is that this waiver request be adjourned until the proposed home is constructed.
Okay. Mr. Hickey, you are the applicant here?
Correct.
Just give your address, full name and address for the record, please?
Dan Hickey, 52 Darling Avenue, Smithtown.
Okay, now, if I recall correctly, and anybody on the board can jump in and correct me if I'm not correct, that your contention was that sidewalks are never going to be built on this property. They're not in the area immediately, and that since we know that, or should know that now, there should be no reason for us to... For the town to continue to hold on to your bond money to build sidewalks that are not going to be built.
That's correct. I gave a picture, an overhead Google picture of the area of my street, showing... I have 100 feet of woods in front of my house. The house that's going to be built is behind that house. I also have a photograph of the entire 10-block area. There is not a sidewalk there.
Can we have that for the record, please? Mark, I can pass it to Conrad, and then we'll pass it this way.
You know, I'm sorry. Essentially, I don't think this should have been put in the performance deposit originally, because it shouldn't be required.
But it's there now, and we have to deal with it.
It's there now, so I'm asking that it be reduced, so that I can have some money to put back into my house and property.
And I believe, Mr. DeRubi, as you said, you indicated, it might even be alluded to in the memorandum, that it's never been the practice of the planning department or the town to release the bond money until the house is built, right?
That's correct.
And that's just because it's the way it's always been done, right?
Yes.
But if perhaps that particular way of doing things sometimes prejudices certain applicants, because if we, as a planning board, have all looked at it and agreed that sidewalks... We're not going to require sidewalks there, then what justification is there to continue holding bond money for sidewalks that we all agree we don't think should be built and are never going to be built? Does anybody else have anything to say on that?
Yeah. Why was this requirement placed in the...
They do it on every single one.
Without... I'm pretty sure, right?
Yeah, everyone.
We should also mention the request includes waiver of street trees, as well as the sidewalks that he's mentioned.
I think they're one and the same, because the sidewalks will require street trees, you know, that comes together.
If I could explain what a performance bond is supposed to do, because I think there's a misunderstanding here. The performance bond is not intended as a shopping list of the exact number of items. It's meant as a...
Security.
It's meant as a form of security. And it's used that we have to justify whatever that particular cost is for that particular subdivisions. So we include a number of items. The... So what the engineering department and highway department and traffic safety generally prepare is a generic listing of what they feel might be the outside cost for that particular subdivision. There are things that happen, such as curbing may cost more, or paving may cost more, our trees may cost less, or whatever. But that number that we raise is for exactly to justify the performance bond that is out there. If the board is considering things like waiving independent items, it's generally looked at at the final end of the subdivision, because now you have an opportunity to say and make the adjustments afterwards, to say, well, our original estimate was maybe a little bit too much in this area, and we could reduce it. What we have... This is a board policy, and we're not... The board certainly is within their jurisdiction to consider a waiver at any time. That's your... We're not arguing that, but we are... What we are saying is what has been the past practice of the board, what we would recommend, but certainly this is well within your purview to change policy or to look at something more specifically. I would basically be concerned with the fact that when you start nitpicking, or... Excuse me, that's maybe the wrong term. If you start piecemealing what this bond reduction is, you may not end up, if there's some shifting of prices at the end, to make adjustments. If the board would be of a mind to... Wanted to compromise on something of this particular nature, one I would... This I would recommend is certainly... I do recommend waiving the street trees, because I think those are things that we have to see at the end of the subdivision, if they're still there. And if the board wanted to consider that you are waiving the sidewalk cost to allow prudently some flexibility, I would say waive half the sidewalk cost if you're of a mind to waive that. So it would give some flexibility at the end, in case there's some other issue, curbing goes up or pavement goes up, and we need a bond that needs to cover the cost. But, you know, we're... Nothing has been done yet on the subdivision, and it concerns me, when you receive a bond estimate, the... We usually, the highway department and engineering department looks at the bond as a total and says that the money in place is sufficient to cover the remaining improvements. And when we start piecemealing it down like this, I'm concerned, this is not a very large bond. We need not have enough money at the end.
Well, I think, you know, we have a matter before us, and in addressing this particular matter, I think we should attempt to apply common sense and do the right thing by both the applicant and the town. You know, be fair to the applicant, at the same time protect the town and protect the interests of the town in maintaining the area surrounding this particular piece of property. So the fact that it was always done a particular way in the past is kind of far down on the list, as far as my personal view is concerned. And I think we should be looking at what's fair to the applicant, what's fair to the town, how do we protect the town, how do we try to balance everybody's interests? Now, Mr. Hickey, how much is this bond we're talking about?
In total?
Yeah.
In total, it was 23,000 and change. You just waived 4,000 of that for the storm pool.
That was the last hearing.
And now I'm talking about, I believe, an additional $3,620. You know, I might add that the only construction that is going to take place near the road is an additional driveway, so those trees are not even going to be in danger. At great expense, I submitted a tree plan to this town that shows exactly what trees would be coming down to do that. In addition, I had put up additional monies to restore curbs and roadway, if there was any damage to that.
That was my question.
In essence, I'm being asked to inflate what's going on there to build a sidewalk to nowhere.
If he... If we do what he's asking, how much will he still be bonded for with the town?
What? Okay. I believe the numbers are in the neighborhood of about 16,000, 15 to 16,000.
All right.
So basically, we're talking about, if we grant Mr. Hickey's application, you're going to get back about $3,600 of the 19 or 20,000 dollars or so that's been bonded?
That's correct. Thirty... I think it's $3,620.
And I think we all...
I think it is protected.
We can all agree that, as far as the sidewalks are concerned, that they're likely never to be built there.
Correct.
So now we're talking about holding the bond money that he's asking for back for the street trees, but we still have $16,000 left...
That's correct.
To cover the whole project, which would include the street trees.
I'd like to make a point as well. I respect what Frank is saying about, well, we want to have as much cash on hand in case cost estimates were inaccurate. But I don't think we should ever hold money for something we don't think belongs. So if the argument we're making is we're going to hold back this money for a sidewalk we know may never go in, because at a later date we might have misestimated on trees or curbing, maybe when we make these estimates of the things we think really will go in, we have to estimate them sufficiently high, so as not to have a cash reserve from something we know will never go in. In your shoes, I would not want to hold back money for a sidewalk that I know would never be going in.
Well, that's...
But in your shoes, you can reasonably be asked to put enough money aside for trees and for curbs and for anything else that we know would be an issue.
And can I add for the record? In today's real estate money, that could be there for 10 years, and I may die before I ever get to do this. Number two, I have to go for a building permit and COs, so if I didn't do something, they got me.
It seems to me that the town's interests are adequately protected.
And, Mr. Hickey, what else have you paid for already?
What have I paid for?
Yeah.
I probably put about $40,000 into planning and coming before this board over the last seven years.
So would you say you have paid for some improvements already?
No, I have not. I wanted to have some money out so I can start, you know, putting a new driveway in.
And if your application is granted, you would get back about $3,600?
Right.
And the town would still have 16,000 and change to secure itself or to secure the rest of the project?
That's approximately correct.
Okay. Anybody have a motion they want to make on this application?
In the matter of Catherine Estates, I move that we waive... I move that we adopt a resolution approving the applicant's request to waive the bond monies for the street trees and sidewalks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed? It's a resolution... The motion is carried 4 to 1, and the resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't think we should be holding somebody's money for something we know is never going to be built.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of correction, so that we're clarifying the record. The board is also reducing the bond amount.
Okay. Correct. We're reducing the bond amount...
That was...
In the amount that we discussed on the record. So that we can, to the extent we need to correct the resolution, so moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
So 4 to 1 again, the motion to correct the resolution carries, and the resolution is adopted as modified.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part III, item 14, is the waiver request for Jenna Court, Section 2, to leave the existing turnaround on Jenna Court. You have in front of you a request to withdraw this request before the board. This cul-de-sac has been filled in, and for your records, I have a photograph of that here. Do they need a motion on this?
To withdraw, yes.
Do we have to do anything?
You're approving the withdrawal.
Okay.
It's off your agenda, so I would recommend a resolution.
Okay.
The matter's being withdrawn?
Yes. You're accepting the withdrawal.
Okay. I see there's a letter from Mr. Tramaco, attorney for the applicant, dated August 5, 2014, requesting that the waiver request pending before the board be withdrawn. Anybody want to make a motion on this?
In the matter of Jenna Court, I move that we approve the request of the applicant to withdraw the waiver request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Opposed? None?
So approved, so withdrawn.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part III, item 15, is a waiver request for Dolan Platt, number 879, to lift one of the planning board's conditions. The applicant requests to lift a restrictive covenant required by the planning board in order to waive the requirement for applying for a 288 application to build on an unimproved street. The applicant is requesting to have an existing and a proposed home in the subdivision known as Dolan Platt 879 front on an improved nine-foot-wide road. The map of Dolan Platt number 879 was granted conditional final approval from the planning board on July 7, 1993. This application was approved for a two-lot subdivision on a four-acre parcel fronting on Meadow Glen Road. This property was roughly rectangular-shaped, approximately 580 feet long by 110 feet wide, with only 110 feet of frontage on Meadow Glen Road. However, adjacent to this property was a 50-foot-wide private right-of-way, improved only with a narrow nine-foot-wide driveway. This property has 625 feet of frontage along this right-of-way, which you can see at the southern portion of the map here. This property was split into two lots, with lot number one on a corner of Meadow Glen Road and the right-of-way, and lot number two with the Dolans' existing home having only frontage on the right-of-way. The existing driveway connecting the existing home with Meadow Glen Road would be removed, and all access was designed to use this private road. At the time of the subdivision approval in 1993, the private right-of-way was held by an adjacent owner, and the applicant did not yet own it. To address this issue, the planning board approved a 25-foot-wide temporary driveway easement traversing lot number one, so that lot number two with the existing home could temporarily access Meadow Glen Road until the 50-foot right-of-way was acquired and improved. The planning board ruled that when the applicant acquired this right-of-way, it was to be improved as a road. All lots in the subdivision were to be rerouted to this road, and the temporary driveway easement was to be abandoned. Condition W of the planning board's conditional final approval states, "A declaration of covenants and restrictions is required to be filed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk to state that the common driveway is temporary, and access to each lot shall be rerouted to the adjacent right-of-way upon its development as a street. The common driveway will then be abandoned and restored to natural plantings. The document shall also state that the driveway is the responsibility of the property owners." By 1997, the applicant had acquired the 50-foot right-of-way, but indicated that the home on lot number one would not be built in the foreseeable future, and requested that they be released from the performance bond. No driveway was constructed on the temporary driveway easement, and lot number two continued to access Meadow Glen Road from the existing driveway across lot number one. On June 18, 1997, the planning board approved the reduction of the performance bond, with the condition that the applicant could not build on lot number one without first improving the right-of-way to the satisfaction of the board. The board required the applicant to submit an application identical to a 288 application, where the planning board approves improvements to an unimproved street. Condition number one of this approval states, "A restrictive covenant shall be filed with Condition number one of this approval states, "A restrictive covenant shall be filed with a deed in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk agreeing that no building permit shall be issued without requiring the public improvements necessary, as determined by the planning board, after review of an application identical in procedure and requirements to applications required pursuant to Section two eighty-eight of Town Law." This restrictive covenant was filed, and the performance bond was released. Since that time, the Dolans sold off lot number one. When the new owner applied for a building permit for this lot, he was informed that no building permit could be granted until the planning board approves the improvements to the fifty-foot wide private right-of-way, which currently has only nine feet of paving. The applicant objected to improving the private road, and on May fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, the applicant submitted an application to lift the restrictive covenant placed by the planning board and waive the requirement of making an application identical to a two eighty-eight application. This would obviate the requirement that the road be improved, which would permit lot number one to be developed without improving the street. The proposed home would sever the existing driveway to Meadow Glen Road from the existing house on lot number two, and both homes would have access to driveways onto the unimproved private road. And you have a map of that attached to your packet as well. The applicant has proposed to have lot number one and lot number two each have their own driveway out to the nine-foot wide private road. As an alternative, the applicant has proposed having lot number one build a new driveway to Meadow Glen Road paralleling the private road, and having lot number two construct a driveway across lot number one, connecting to the first driveway using the temporary driveway easement from nineteen ninety-three, when the applicant had not yet acquired the right-of-way. You also have a map of that scenario in your packet as well. In both scenarios, the applicant is requesting not to make any improvements to the nine-foot wide road in front of both lots. The Highway Department has reviewed this request and noted they do not usually object to requests related to private roads, but this should not be interpreted as an endorsement or approval of this request. However, the Highway Superintendent added, "While we do not comment on changes to private roads, the Highway Department sees no reason to waive the requirement for the subdivision, which may require the creation of a new driveway onto the public road Meadow Glen Road. Further, given the site distances and traffic on this road, it would be advisable to minimize the number of driveways on Meadow Glen Road by having all access in the subdivision use the private road as originally planned." The Engineering Department has reviewed this request and does not support this waiver. The Traffic Safety Department has no comment. The Planning Department has reviewed this request and is opposed to lifting the planning board's restrictive covenant and the waiver of the road improvements. The current road is paved only nine feet wide, which is substandard and insufficient for multiple homes. And I believe I have a photo of that here. Allowing a home to be built on lot number one without improving this road would leave both the proposed and existing homes without access to an adequately improved street, in addition to the other home that currently uses this road for access. The alternative proposal to construct a parallel driveway to the private road would be inadvisable because it creates another curb cut on Meadow Glen Road immediately adjacent to the intersection with the existing private road. Multiple driveways placed so close together creates a hazard, particularly on a collector road of limited site distance. Further, this approach would require lot number two to travel over lot number one through a temporary easement that was only intended to be used if the home was built before the applicant had acquired the private road. Because no driveway was constructed here, this approach would mean unnecessarily grading and clearing a path through a natural wooded area for redundant driveway, which would be required to be removed as soon as the private road was improved for a future subdivision. The Planning Department does not support the waiver of the road improvements and recommends that the fifty-foot wide private road be improved, inasmuch to give both lots of Dolan Platt adequate access to an improved street. Per the planning board's nineteen ninety-seven condition, the specific improvements would be determined by the planning board at a hearing following an application and review by all concerned departments. In order to give access to both the existing and proposed home, the applicant would not be required for improving the entire length of the road, just to a point where lot number two could build a driveway. This would require approximately two hundred and twenty-five feet of road. The applicants have indicated that they intend to further subdivide lot number two at some point in the future, and this lot may be subdivided by the current or future owner. Further, there is a property on the south side of this right-of-way that uses this for access, which is likely to subdivide. In the future, there are likely to be up to five homes that will access this right-of-way. Therefore, it is inevitable that this road will have to be further improved in the future. Allowing these homes to access the unimproved road without making any improvements would unfairly shift the whole cost of improving the entire length of road into one of the other proposed subdivisions. It is the position of the Planning Department that all developers should be responsible for the road improvements needed to give access to their lots at the time that they are built. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby denies the request of Thomas and Carolyn Dolan to waive the requirement to submit an application identical in procedure and requirements to applications required pursuant to Section of two eighty-eight of Town Law in order to improve the private road in the subdivision known as Dolan Platt, number eight seventy-nine.
Yes. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before the applicant speaks, if I could just clarify something for some of the residents who may be here. If we, we, because of posting requirements in the town, we posted on the cul-de-sac to the right of this particular subdivision, a sign on this particular matter. This was an area where we discussed previously, a subdivision having access going on to that particular subdivision, which was denied by this board. The only reason why there was a sign on the cul-de-sac was because it's required by Town Law. There is no matter that is before this board with regard to opening up that right-of-way. This matter was litigated in court, and the board won that litigation. And I just want to clarify, if there's any residents in the audience that are assuming we are revisiting this matter, we are not, that posting was only due because that right-of-way is still within the town domain, and according to our laws, we have to post a sign on that property because it is, it's considered frontage. But if anybody is here with regard to that, there is no matter that we are considering in that area. All of this matter is concentrated on Meadow Road. That's the, which is to the left of that particular illustration, so.
Meadow Glen Road, you mean?
Meadow Glen Road, yes. So I just want to clarify that because we believe that there may have been a misunderstanding as to why the signs were posted.
Okay, well, thank you very much for clarifying that. Mr. Tramaco, you are here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, yes.
Full name and address for the record, please.
Vincent J. Tramaco, ten thirty-eight West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. I apologize to the board and the audience. I have a little bit of, a lot of laryngitis tonight. I'd just like to say that I'm going to miss all the fights with Frank. That's what keeps me going, so. I don't know that I'm going to have much of a fight with his successor, but be that as it may, we're probably going to have a fight tonight, so.
He seems to have worn down your vocals as it is.
I can't hear.
He seems to have worn down your vocals already as it is, so.
So the history of this property goes back to nineteen ninety-two, when the Dolans made application to subdivide the property into two lots, as you see on the, on the board. Initially, when their application was approved, the planning board at that time required a performance bond. The performance bond, I can't remember exactly what it was, but it was fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. Thereafter, the Dolans came to my office and said that they really weren't going to do any improvements right away, and was there another way to do this? I think Frank figured it out, that, well, why don't you post a covenant? And the covenant basically said that when you improve lot one, you've got to come to the, we'll, we'll get rid of the performance bond, but when you improve lot one, then you have to come to us and, come to the board and talk about what public improvements the board, in your discretion, would require. So we filed a restrictive covenant. There's no question that Carolyn and Tom Dolan signed it. The ramifications of which really coming forward to be talked about tonight. In the interim, and probably, I think it was last year, the Persicos who were here tonight purchased lot number one. Now, lot number one, as you can see, it's, fronts on Meadow Glen Road, as well as it goes on along that right-of-way that the Dolans got, I think, in, I don't know, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, whenever it was, doesn't matter. One of the things I'd like to correct is, in the planning advisory report, it talks about in a number of, in two places that I can see, a fifty-foot right-of-way, and it appears, and I know that's not the case, that the planning department is recommending improving the whole fifty-foot right-of-way. At least that's what it looks like in, in, on the second page in the second full paragraph, approves the improvements to the fifty-foot private right-of-way. Well, in any case, the board, even with a subdivision in a file map, the improvements for a road are usually thirty feet in curbs, et cetera. And then it says it again, I think in the last page, a fifty-foot private right-of-way be improved to give both lots on Dolan Platt adequate access. A number of times I can remember
Mr. Tramaco?
where a lot on a, a two or three-lot subdivision fronted on a road, I can remember one on Veterans Highway, and the planning board, although there could be access on the Veterans Highway, allowed us to do an easement across another piece of property to get to the subject property. I can't remember the name.
Mr. Tramaco, if I could clarify something, what was written in the memo was a description of the property, which happens to be the gray piece of property that's at the bottom of that particular subdivision. So when, that particular land was owned by Mrs. Bogie, who subdivision later became Berry Hill, and that was the access that went through that area. It happens to be fifty feet wide. That's how we're describing the property. I believe I've mentioned to you, and I am no way expecting this to be developed as a road fifty feet wide. We are, and I've suggested several times, that it be developed as a private road, and whatever the specifications would be for the, by the town engineer for sufficient access would be satisfactory to us. So it's not, it's not going to be fifty feet wide for the pavement, and it's certainly going to be much smaller.
Thank you. So, the, and, and you just mentioned it, Frank. Initially, when Hurtado developed the, the property in the rear, that road was supposed to go through. It never happened, for whatever reason, and it was, yeah, coming from Meadow Glen, where you see this whole area here, and it would run, run right up to the other subdivision. I don't know the reason why it, it didn't happen, other than there was a big change of grade. In any event, we know at this point in time, that's never going to happen. So what we're basically asking for, and I know the board, we're here asking the board tonight not to waive any improvement on the subject property on that, that road, but what we'd like to propose, you know, bearing in mind that we could come off Meadow Glen, but we're not, and it's, we know it's not a good idea. Let us improve that nine-foot, we think it's a little wider, but anyway, nine-foot roadway to a, a, a width of sixteen feet, and we would bring it up to here, up to the dividing line between lots one and two, and then the existing house would come off that same sixteen-foot road. Initially, we agreed a long, 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 long time ago that it would be a sixteen-foot wide common driveway, and then when it got between lot one and two, it would slim down to a twelve-foot driveway thereafter. But there really is no necessity. If this is correct, we can do the sixteen feet right to here and then come out with our driveway. That would mean sufficient access for the Persicos in their building their new home. It would be plenty of access for the lot two, the Dolans' property, which they still own. We know that there is an owner on this side, and they've been using that for years. They have a right-of-way or an easement, which gives them the right to use that. If and when the Dolans separate or divide lot two to future lot three, then if additional width of the road is required, our suggestion is we come back to the planning board, and the planning board look, takes a second look and says, okay, we want additional roadway width of sixteen feet, or whatever the board finds acceptable. But right now, it just doesn't make any sense to do any more than a sixteen-foot road, given the fact that this side, and I'm sorry, I, I don't remember the folks' name, but they've been coming out of that for many years, and there doesn't seem to be a problem. And when Dolan lived there, they were coming out of that road. So I don't think one more person at this, one more family at this time is going to make any big difference in what happens. So it's not that they're, we're not willing to make any improvements, we just don't want to make massive improvements at this time, when it's really not going to accommodate any more than the most three families, unless Dolans subdivide again, and I don't know if there's room, probably there is, for subdivision on the other side of the road, a two-lot subdivision. Whatever issues about cutting the road through have been resolved by litigation. So we think this is a rational approach to this application. It wouldn't financially strap my clients, the Dolans, or the Persicos, and there would be sufficient access and safe access. And we know that the board really did do us a favor when they removed the performance bond and said we could post, we could file a restrictive covenant, and that restrictive covenant says, you got to come back to the board, and that's what we're doing tonight. So we ask the board to favorably consider what we've asked for tonight, and if the board has any questions or anything to do with the history of what happened here. Carolyn Dolan is here, and she certainly knows it better than I do, if you have any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Tramaco, just, can you just give us, or give me an idea, or give us an idea of the dimensions we're talking about here? Approximately from Meadow Glen Road, I'm looking at the applicant's proposal up on the screen there, how far is it, and how many feet is it from Meadow Glen Road to the driveway of the proposed home, approximately?
Of the proposed home?
Yes.
About a hundred and seventeen, I would say, the most, a hundred and thirty feet to here, right? About a hundred and thirty feet.
And can you just give me an estimate as to the distance between the two driveways, in other words, from the first proposed driveway to the, the second proposed driveway?
Seventy. Maybe thirty-five or forty feet.
Okay. Ma'am, can you just give your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Carolyn Dolan, thirty-nine Meadow Glen Road, Fort Salanga.
Okay. Before we have any questions, any further questions, is there anything you want to say at this point?
Yes. I would like to note, this is the first we're hearing about the sixteen feet and the proposal. What I've explained to the applicant on a number of occasions was that we anticipate that there will eventually be five homes in this particular area that'll access this particular road, which is why we have stringently adhered to trying to improve this right-of-way. The Dolans have indicated that they may consider a future subdivision, which will be to the right of their existing house, another lot, and we had the lot to the south, which was the subject of the litigation, which we have two homes. So we've adhered to the fact that there will be- So we've adhered to the fact that there will be, be a lot of access on this roadway, and that nine feet would not be sufficient. What I've explained to Mr. Tramarko was to discuss this matter with the town engineer, and whatever they could agree on the width of the road would be sufficient for us, so long as it would meet whatever the engineering specifications are. 16 feet, from a planner's point of view, I would say, is, is fine. However, I don't know what the town engineer, or we would also want to contact the fire department to make sure that they're happy with this. Since the applicant is willing to make this adjustment at this point, what I would like to request from the board is adjourn this matter, because I can see, and I could, if the applicant is willing to go this far, we could probably work on a staging of the improvement of this area that would match when the homes are built, and it would probably work within the same confines of what the applicant is accepting. For example, I think we could accept if, you know, let's say, an improvement up to the first driveway, and maybe as the sequencing goes on, another home would add another segment onto that. Or it might be that we go to 16 feet now, and maybe another home would have to widen an additional four feet, or whatever. Given the fact that we're doing it that particular way, I would like, if the applicant is willing at this particular point, rather than try to reach, I, I know for a fact, the highway department and town engineer has not seen the 16-foot request at all. So I think it's something we could probably work with the applicant on, and maybe we could come up with a compromise that they could live with, and we could live with in that particular area.
Well, I think that's a very worthwhile suggestion. I think also, if it was adjourned, it would give the members of the board the opportunity, should any of the board members wish to, to go out there and do a site inspection and see for ourselves what the area looks like, when, so that we have our own view of what, of what's there, when we're considering what should be there in the future. So, Mr. Tramarko, do you, are you willing to work with Mr. Derubias on this proposal?
I am never going to work with him again, so.
One last time? One last time?
One last time, but what I do want to, you know, emphasize is, these young folks over here, and the old guy with, is their attorney, they've been trying to build a house and get a permit for five or six months at least, and I wonder if there's a way, in your infinite wisdom, Frank, that we can figure out how they can get that permit and get going.
I think if we could agree, that, I think the permit is secondary, because once we could agree on the road, the permit, we will bond whatever is necessary, and the house could begin with a permit. That would be, I think, the best way to approach this, if they wanted to get a permit immediately. If we could, this is, you know, we're discussing a detail, I understand your clients want to build, if we could agree on an approach here, I would talk with the town engineer or whatever, and we would possibly, and then come back, because a 280A is also a bonding process, we would make a recommendation to this board and stage it, and I think if we're talking about a 16-foot, at least a segment of at least 16 feet in that particular location, I think it's something we could work with, at least up to the first driveway. And at least, in my viewpoint, I still have to convince the town engineer.
The next meeting is.
It's going to be the first meeting in September.
Wednesday in September.
Be the third, I think, the third, or the?
Yeah, yeah, it is, it's the middle, the middle of.
Fourth, right, is it the fourth?
No, no.
No, it's in the teens, it's in the teens.
Oh, the holidays, right, okay, it's about a month from now.
Okay.
About a month from now.
Yeah, I, well, first, I'd just like to make two clarifications from what's been said already. One of them was that this road is nine feet wide, and if my understanding's correct, it's over 30 feet at the junction of Meadow Glen Road and this driveway. So right there alone, I know there was reference to sightlines and things like that. The other comment I'd like to make is, the only conversation since March I've had with the planning department about the width of this road, I was told that they wanted 24 feet wide with curbs, almost, just like all the town roads that surround our property, and the, where the 16 feet came up from, which is what we always assumed was going to be done, was from the town of Smithtown, where it tells us to put in a 16-foot common driveway to the first lot, and then 12 feet thereafter, which is what our intention always was, was to do exactly what the town told us. Our intention was never to leave at the nine feet. So I just wanted to clarify that, that we were going to build this driveway in accordance with a letter that we were directed to.
Okay. Ms. Dolan?
Yes.
I think we should adjourn, I, I'm reading the waiver request right here. It is to waive this requirement. However, forgetting that for the moment, I think if you're willing to improve that particular road, I think what the issue is of the 24 feet is, I'm not, I don't think the engineering department would want a 24-foot wide road in this particular area. If somebody asks the engineering department, what are the dimensions of the roads in this area, since it's one acre zoning, it's 24 feet, that's what we're using in, as small roads in one acre zoning, this would be a private road, which would be smaller. Mr. Tramarko, I think, would, would verify that in the past, we've gone with 20-foot private roads, and I think what you're talking about here is a 16-foot private road, and this would be, as long as the, the town engineer and the, the fire mar, the, the fire marshal and the fire department could approve a road in here, I would go for the minimum-sized road. From a planner's, I've always said this from a planner's perspective, we would want this to mimic the type of roads that we see, like in the village of Nissawak, and I think that could be done. So having said that, and I, I think at this point, you said, I said, or whatever said, maybe there was a miscommunication on all parties' part, I would be gladly, as my swan song, meet with Mr. Tramarko and see if we could resolve this in a meeting with the town engineer, and see if we could come to an agreement that is acceptable to all parties. I would do not necessarily want a curbed road in this particular location, just because from a planner's point of view, it's not characteristic. And I would try to work out as rural appearing road as I can, but I have to listen to our town engineer. But I'd be willing to broker something between you and Mr. Tramarko with the town attorney.
So the process that you're suggesting would be, meeting with Mr. Tramarko, attempting to work it out, but also getting input from the town engineer, which is necessary, and also from the fire department, which is also necessary?
That's correct.
If we don't have that information here tonight?
That's correct.
Okay.
If I could, since this is a subdivision that's over 20 years old, and you guys are all new from when we subdivided, I just want to just give you one minute of what the history of this was, and back in the 90s, there were about 60 acres of landlocked land in our location. And the town had adopted an, oh, a road plan that shows the development of this, so that it would resolve things like dead-end roads and fire truck access, and all the, another flag lot that was approved, and our flag lot. And a subdivision map had, was prepared by the builder, who pretty much developed that entire back area, and he showed the road going through, from the back to Meadow Glen Road. What was built was different, and I just wanted to remind the board of what the conditions were back then. And also, the origin of this restrictive covenant actually comes from engineering, where they refer to this future subdivision, and all they had asked for us, from us at the time, was that when that 50-foot right-of-way becomes a road, according to this other builder, that we would give up our private easement and just tap off of that road. There's no mention of us building a road, it just says that when, and they mentioned in minutes of meetings, this other builder who was developing many, many homes. And I actually have minutes of meetings and two other documents from the town that just tell us that we just, they don't want to have our private drives.
Mrs. Dolan?
Yes.
I was here when this map was done, and I'm very familiar with it. And the short answer is, when your subdivision was approved, at that Berry Hill was not developed, and you did not have access to that particular right-of-way, which we wanted you to have access to it. When Berry Hill was then developed, that was the, a driveway that went all the way up to Berry Hill. We originally proposed a road in that location that would go and connect all the way up to that particular subdivision. However, as Mr. Tramarko correctly noted, we, in the process of doing that subdivision, we found that there were topographical issues in that particular area, which we decided that we would destroy more of the environment by building that road than it was worth, and we changed the Berry Hill subdivision and not built that particular road. That left us with that segment that you have there, and at the time, we told the builder we wanted him to get rid of that. And either give it to you, or give it to the land that was across from you, I think it's Ostavich is the gentleman that owns it.
Ostavich.
Yes. And you accepted that particular road, and that was, at that time, with our understanding that that would suffice for the access for your particular lot as well as his. And that's what the town has defended in this particular area, and what we are basically saying is, this is a plan that's been in effect now for this particular area, we actually went to court to defend this. We have a lot of documentation, this is the scheme that we feel is the best for this particular area. Our only disagreement with your attorney has been our understanding, based upon your application that's submitted here, that you wanted to waive the requirement for improving that particular road. What we are now debating is the extent of that improvement. I find that negotiable, and I'm willing to work with our town engineer and see if we could come up with something that you and us could agree to.
I understand that, I just want certain facts to be on the table, so when this is reviewed, all the information's out there. And the topographical issues, if I'm not mistaken, I have the minutes to the meeting where it was discussed, and the issue was that a snowplow, because it was, whatever reason, the builder was told he didn't, whatever.
Excuse me, Mrs. Dolan?
That there was a snowplow issue.
Can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Pardon me. They're willing to work with you. Are you willing to work with them?
I am, but I just.
So why, why are we going to keep going around and around? Obviously, there's disagreements about what happened in the past. If they're willing to work with you, and you're willing to work with them?
I understand.
Let's move on and get it done.
But you also said that you wanted to go back to the site and review it, and I just wanted you to have.
I said that if we adjourned it, it would give anybody who wanted to go back to the site the opportunity to go look at it.
Okay, I just felt that the history was important. Okay?
Mrs. Tramarko, as the applicant's attorney, are you willing to attempt to sit down with Mr. Derubias, be, maybe one last time, and try to work this out with him when he gets the information from the town engineer and the fire marshal, or fire department that we need, in order to, we can make a proper decision on this?
I am, as long as my clients authorize me to do it, or maybe Carolyn can come up and be part of that meeting.
You don't have any objection if she comes to the meeting, right?
No.
Okay.
More than ever.
All right. So ma'am, you can attend the meeting, be there as they discuss it, and while you're right there, and, you know, you can voice your opinion as they go step by step.
Okay.
Okay? Now, is there anybody else in attendance tonight who wishes to be heard on this particular matter? All right, sir, please come up to the microphone and give your name and address.
Gordon Ostojic, O-S-T-O-J-I-C, reside at 43 Meadow Glen Road, I'm the mystery owner of the property just south of the Dolans. I've been using this driveway as an easement right of Ingress and Egress for the past 18 years. It's, it's not an eight-foot driveway, it's barely an eight, it's barely an eight-foot driveway, it's not a nine-foot driveway. I understand they have a 50-foot right-of-way there, but the driveway's much narrower than there, as has been said. If that, if they enlarge the road to 16 feet, then narrow it to 12 feet, and then in the future, I'm going to subdivide, and then they're going to subdivide a rear lot, who's going to be responsible for widening that road to what the town's going to require at that time?
Well, first off, we don't have a proposal that we've agreed to.
Right.
But what I will recommend to the applicant, that we have sufficient access to their second home that we see there, in that particular location, whatever the town engineer would have, and then if they decide to build a third lot to the other side, they'll be required to bring the improvements back. If you decide to bring your subdivision in, I'll request you to do it. However, what would be ideal is if you could get together, and, and we know that you would like to subdivide, and maybe we could accommodate a proposal that everybody could agree to in this area, and have just one improvement, and you jointly fund it for whatever your purposes are, and it can maintain as a private road. What is, we're going to also have to agree to, is once it is a private road, there has to be some sort of property owners' agreement that we will ask in place, because it will have to be maintained in the future. And if, my recommendation is, is if you could sit with your neighbor and work out something, that would be ideal. And we would probably go along, as so long as, as the road is built to specifications that we feel comfortable with, that meet all of our specifications, and it serves your particular need. I will tell you this, I'm looking for the minimum amount of road to be built in this particular area. The minimum length and the minimum width that would meet our specifications.
Understood. And the option of accessing both lots from Meadow Glen, that's definitely not something that can be considered, leave that road alone for the two lots that could be subdivided in the future?
I mean, going back to.
It would be narrower, you know, keep it like a 12-foot driveway on that 50-foot easement for the two future subdivisions, and have these two homes accessed by Meadow Glen Road, the way the Dolans, yeah, kind of sort of like that. That's, that's, that's an idea, right? I mean, I understand that right now, the Dolans driveway goes right across their new lot.
Can I just ask, where is your home located, since it's not actually illustrated? That's you, and you're currently using the eight, nine-foot?
I'm the only one, yeah, who has used it for the last 18 years.
And who's currently, who's currently maintaining that?
Yeah, it's a little bit of a debate. Legally, they own it, I have the rights, again, to, to use it, I have been maintaining it, they've helped me out maybe once or twice, maybe three times, in snow conditions, but I've been the one who's been maintaining the road for 18 years. And not, don't know what the legal aspect of that is, who's really responsible for that, I, I never got a clear picture of that, but I've been the one maintaining that road the whole time. And believe me, it's been a nightmare, especially with the winter like last winter, you could imagine. That's 400 feet we're talking about before you even get to my driveway, which is another 400, 500 feet to get back around.
Yeah, I think, I think we see that, I think we see that.
Okay, so it's, it's been, it's beautiful in, in the good weather, but when it's horrific outside, it's, it's not all that pleasurable. They couldn't, no, my question is, again, if they could access the existing Dolan house and the new lot from Meadow Glen Road, and have an easement across lot number one to Dolan's home in a different way, pretty much the way it's shown over here, you know, whatever is accommodating to both people, and leave the driveway that I use now for the two lots in the back, and just have that even a narrower, narrower road, would that be more?
You do realize there's also a proposal for another lot?
In the back.
To the, the Dolans wish, have indicated to us that to the right of their existing home, they wish to create another lot.
Correct, right. Future lot three.
And we would have to provide access for that lot as well.
Right.
So we believe that the, the best solution for a five-lot subdivision is to have one private road that goes along that particular right-of-way. It's the simplest and most direct.
Because if we, if we, if this proposal is done, that gives us access to these two homes, but what Mr. Derubias is saying is that we know there's probably going to be at least one other home in the back, and this proposal wouldn't deal with that, but the other proposal would give us an opportunity to deal with that if and when that happens.
That's correct.
Okay, I would just think that it would be a more pleasant environment by having access from Meadow Glen for the first two lots, and having a much smaller, cointer road for the future two lots, or, yeah, future two additional lots, which would be a total of three lots, to make that, I mean, you, for a five-lot subdivision, you would have a pretty big road. Are you saying that it would narrow down as we get further back into my property, or?
Well, what I'd like you to do is agree to a design. We had a very similar situation, and I think we're taking the board's time here, but the, we had a very similar situation of this on Town Line Road where this came about, and what we agreed to was actually two parallel eight-foot roads like a boulevard that came down, and it was tree-lined down the center, and they each. down, and it was tree-lined down the center, and they each became like one-way streets. And that was satisfactory to everybody because it was, they were able to maintain an existing driveway and add another driveway onto it, and they came out with an attractive design. I'm willing to, or I think we're willing to take a look at, at something creative here as long as it meets town specifications. However, that said, if we're talking about just the concept, one route, five homes access that one route, that's what we think is the best approach. The design can be very, very flexible in terms of the width, how it's done, a boulevard, a single road, twenty-four feet, sixteen feet, whatever you think works and are, and we think will work.
Yeah. There's also an environmental impact, the trees that would have to be taken down on the existing right-of-way is dozens, dozens.
If you're going to build more homes in this area, the trees are going to come down. So we already know that.
Now, it's okay, okay.
Okay? And the idea is to minimize the amount that, of trees that have to go down here, and I'm willing to work with you on that.
Yeah.
And that includes if we have to, and we have some of these private roads where we preserve trees in the center of the road by parish shaping the road around them and things like that, we're willing to work with you on something like that. It's your area, both the Dolans and you, and you have to live there, and we would like it to be designed in a way that you find it the, the most attractive. But again, I have to take a look, as a planning director, to take a look at the fact that I have five homes, five lots that may be in this area, and what's the best way to do that? And I think what has been consistently our plan is to improve, which is the old driveway to the Bogie Estate. That's basically what we're recommending for this area.
Mr. Derubias's plan could actually work well for you too because he's talking about a road maintenance agreement. If you end up with five homes and it's a written agreement guaranteeing who's going to participate in maintenance, that actually could be to your advantage.
Does the town wouldn't be responsible for snow removal, garbage pickup? I mean, where would the garbage cans go?
No, the garbage pickup, you could enter into, that is not my area of expertise. I would suggest you call the DEW, but they do do pickups on private roads. And you would have to arrange that, you know, as, as far as the garbage. But that's not my area of expertise.
Understood.
But if we have a road, that would be one of the things that is why the town engineer is looking at the specifications, because things like fire trucks, garbage trucks, and other things have to go down these particular roads, and he's going to choose something that is going to be able to go down there. We have to, if we're going to send trucks down this road, one of the things we have to take a look at is how are they going to get back out.
Right.
And I would recommend if we could do a loop of some sort rather than a cul-de-sac, that would be easier. But again, this has to be, we have to discuss this.
Right. I'm imagining it's going to be street lighting and all sorts of drainage.
Aren't we getting a little far beyond the, what we're supposed to be dealing with here tonight?
Yes.
With these, these two lots right here and these two houses? Anything else, sir?
No, that'll be all.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard on this? Ma'am, please come up.
Hello. My name's Lauren Persico. We are the owners of lot number one. First and foremost, I would just like to say that we purchased this piece of property about a year and a half ago, and all we want to do is just live here. We just want to start a family and be able to move forward with our lives. And so far, there's been a lot of conflicting information, not from the board at all. I think there's clearly a lot of history, probably that started before I was born, that we can't seem to get over. So my husband and I would like to request you be at the meeting with the engineer and yourself, just so that we could hear it for ourselves, what's going on, because it was our understanding that it was already proposed for the sixteen-foot wide driveway, and apparently it wasn't. So I would just like it to be on the record that we're requesting to be at that meeting so that we can hear what the propositions are from.
Do you have any problem with them being there? Mr. Derubias?
No.
Mr. Tramarko, do you have any problem with them being there, participating if they want to, since it's their house that we're, you know, we're dealing with here? Okay, so nobody has any problem. Is there a way that we can make sure they get notified when the meeting, you have an attorney here?
Well, I'm going to ask Mr. Tramarko to.
Okay. Thank you if you'll take that upon yourself, that would be appreciated.
That's great.
So ma'am, Mr. Tramarko represents the applicant, is he going to contact your attorney as far as the scheduling of the meeting is concerned? And that way, you will get an opportunity to come down, or to go down. I assume your attorney can too. That's between you, that's all you guys. Okay?
Great. And just to clarify, I know there's, as of right now, there's no plans that have been submitted for any further subdivision, so we don't have to wait for any of that before we can get moving, right?
I'm not sure what your question is.
So there's a lot of conversation.
You're asking where you can start building your home, correct?
Yeah. There was a lot of conversation about future subdivisions and developments and roads and lights and garbage and whatever that has not even been submitted yet. So that will not affect us putting in a, widening the road and building.
We could work in segments on here, and obviously, we already, what is basically the two eighty A process is basically a building permit. It's a single building permit that is being reviewed.
Right.
And, and the purpose of it is to allow you to construct your home. So it is not, there'll be other subdivision-related matters that'll deal with the, the future of this, but this property's already been subdivided.
Okay.
I'm anticipating that if we could agree with, come to an agreement on this, we should be able to get you a building permit this fall.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, now, just so you know, I mean, what we have here before us today is the, we're trying to focus on dealing with the application before us, which is your home, your future home and lot number two, but also with an eye towards what may be coming down the fut- in the future of other, with respect to other subdivisions, like some of the issues that the gentleman who spoke before you raised. So they have to address what's here now, but also think about what may be coming down the road.
Of course, from a planning perspective, just thinking long-term, but just making sure that won't be the next thing that we have to wait for. Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this matter? Hearing none. Motion, please.
I move that we adjourn the matter of Dolan plot number eight, seven, nine, for further considerations and for an onsite inspection by the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None? So adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, Alex was asking me a technical question, which is, as part, if we could, are working in agreement with, the applicant currently funded a, or requested a two eighty, excuse me, a waiver request on this. If we're in agreement, we are going to change the application to a two eighty A request and bring it back as a two eighty to comply with whatever the previous approval is. And that is how, because we think the applicant is leaning towards that right now. So I just wanted to let the board know procedurally, that's what we're going to be doing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item Sixteen, is a waiver request for Premier Estates, number one zero zero eight. The applicant is requesting permission to allow an existing fence running perpendicularly through a twenty-five-foot limited access and planting easement. The map of Premier Estates, number ten oh eight, was granted conditional final approval from the planning board on September fifth, two thousand and one. This application was approved for a four-lot subdivision on a two-point-five-seven acre parcel fronting on a cul-de-sac called Premier Court. Two lots of this subdivision also have frontage on this concert Port Jefferson Highway on New York State Route three forty-seven. Running through these lots is a three-hundred-and-ninety-foot-long, twenty-five-foot-wide limited access and planting area. The purpose of this area was to buffer the residents from three forty-seven as well as prevent any ingress or egress onto this busy road. The applicant, David Saxton, is requesting permission to allow an existing six-foot-tall vinyl fence running roughly perpendicularly through the twenty-five-foot planting easement in lot number three, which is Seven Premier Court. As you can see in the attached survey, the fence in question runs perpendicularly from the south side of the home and crosses through the planting area to connect to a stockade fence running along the property line. These fences enclose the rear portion of the property. Typically, planning board has permitted fences to traverse planting areas only along property lines. The engineering department has no objection to this request, and the highway and traffic safety departments have no comment. The planning department has reviewed this request and has no objection to maintaining the fence in its current form. While it is typically desirable to limit fences through planting areas only to property lines, the unique shape of the slot and unusual angle of the home make that an immeasible way to enclose the rear of the property. In this case, the planting area runs roughly parallel to the side of the home rather than the rear. The planning department finds that the existing fence has little impact on the effectiveness of the limited access and planting area, and none of the fences are visible from Route three forty-seven. The planning department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the request of David Saxton to maintain an existing fence running perpendicularly through the twenty-five-foot-wide limited access and planting area in lot number three of Premier Estates, number ten oh eight, as illustrated in the survey submitted as part of this application and dated March twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen.
Anybody present on behalf of the applicant? Sir, please come on up and give your name and address and relationship to the applicant.
David, excuse me, David Saxton, Seven Premier Court. I'm the homeowner.
Okay. You heard the analysis read by the planning department?
I have, yes.
And you heard the proposed resolution?
I think so, yeah.
And you in agreement with it?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wish to be heard on this matter? No? Any questions from any members of the board? None? A motion, please?
Motion to approve the resolution as set forth by the planning department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None? The motion carries unanimously, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you, sir.
Everything can stay the same?
Yes.
That's what I thought, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
In, in regular language, what we just said is everything can stay the same.
Yes.
Okay. Have a good night.
Enjoy your good life.
Good, thanks so much.
Thank you very much.
I see there's a request, a letter requesting to adjourn Garden Gate. Was that adjourned with the other matters in the beginning?
No, it was not.
Okay, so there's a request to adjourn the Garden Gate matter from a letter dated August eighth, two thousand and fourteen. Any motion on this, please?
Motion to adjourn Garden Gate, number one zero three nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None? So adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item Eighteen, is this extension of conditional final approval for Samantha Estates, number eleven twenty-three. The applicant is requesting a ninety-day retroactive extension of the conditional final approval in order to obtain more time to comply with the requirements of posting the performance bond and filing the map. The map of Samantha Estates, eleven twenty-three, was granted conditional final approval by the planning board on May fifth, twenty ten. The board granted the applicant eight retroactive ninety-day extensions of the final approval on April third, two thousand and thirteen, that expired on May fifth, two thousand and thirteen. On May second, two thousand and thirteen, August twenty-first, two thousand and thirteen, November sixth, two thousand and thirteen, February twenty-sixth, two thousand and fourteen, and June eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, the board granted a total of five additional ninety-day extensions of the final approval that expired on August fifth, two thousand and fourteen. The applicant has indicated that they have delivered to the town attorney's office the remaining open items and documents, and they are awaiting his review and comments. At the time, the town attorney has all necessary documents, but the extension of approval expired on August fifth, two thousand and fourteen. The planning department has no objection to the applicant's request and offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants a ninety-day retroactive extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as map of Samantha Estates, eleven twenty-three, beginning August fifth, two thousand and fourteen, through November fifth, two thousand and fourteen.
Sir, you're here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes.
Name and address, please?
Steve Degasino, forty Franciscan Lane, Smithtown, New York.
And I just saw you hand some documents up to Mr. Derubias. Would that be your affidavit of posting that you handed in?
Yes.
Okay. You heard the recommendation of the planning department?
Yes.
And the proposed resolution?
Yes.
You in agreement with that?
Yes.
Anybody in the audience wish to be heard on this matter? Any questions from any members of the board? None? Motion, please?
Motion on the matter of Samantha Estates, number eleven twenty-three, motion to adopt the resolution as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? None? Motion carries unanimously. The resolution is adopted. Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda under Part Three, Item Nineteen, is zoning petition, two thousand and thirteen zero six, Bolo, Long Island Operating Court. I'm going to begin on page four of your memo there where it says, eight recommendation. The petitioner has presented a landscaping plan dated five, seven, fourteen, and has done most of the planting called for in that plan. Planning department staff has inspected the site and found the landscaping to be satisfactory for the purposes of receiving a certificate of occupancy for the reopening of the filling station. However, in that visit, the staff did not approve the landscaping as adequate for the proposed development of the site under the proposed rezoning. The five twenty-seven fourteen landscaping plan does not provide sufficient buffer for the adjacent neighbors and does not adequately replace the materials that were removed without permission. Given that the petitioner is intending to intensify the use on this site, if the petitioner is not willing to provide additional screening for the adjacent residences, we would recommend that the planning board recommends to the town board that they deny the petition. If the board is in agreement with this recommendation, we will offer the following recommendation for your consideration. Be it resolved that the planning board hereby recommends that the town board deny the change of zone position, petition, two thousand and thirteen zero six, of Bolo, Long Island Operating Court, for a change of zone from WSI to NB for the following reason. The petitioner is proposing a landscaping scheme that does not provide sufficient landscaping to buffer and protect the adjacent neighbors from the proposed intensified use. Without such a buffer, NB uses should not be approved for this site.
Mr. De La Cola, are you here on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good evening. Appearing on behalf of the applicant, Eugene Aldina Cola, two hundred Railroad Avenue, Savel in New York.
First, I just want to apologize to you and your clients for the late hour. Unfortunately, we had a long calendar tonight.
It's been a very interesting evening.
Sorry you had a wait. It's been very interesting?
Been a very interesting evening.
I'm glad we were able to make it interesting, at least.
Thank you.
Please, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening's hearing is a continuation of the public hearing held March nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen. At that time, testimony was submitted with, from a traffic expert with regard to traffic issues the area was described, so I will not go through that, the minutes of that hearing. The meeting of March nineteenth was adjourned for the board to make an onsite inspection prior to its vote for a recommendation to the town board. At a planning board hearing held on May twenty-one, two thousand and fourteen, the planning board directed the applicant to submit a landscape plan due to alleged tree removal in the buffer area. The applicant has, as the board may be aware, reopened the gasoline filling station that was previously located on the site. It has installed new underground fuel storage tanks, resurfaced the blacktop area of the site. It planted one hundred and thirty-two evergreen plantings consisting of fifty Leland Cypress, six feet to seven feet in height, six foot, six Leland Cypress, nine to twelve feet in height, ten Eastern White Pines, six feet to seven feet in height, sixty-six Green Giant Abervadi, six feet to seven feet in height. In addition, it planted thirteen Mountain Laurel and fifty-seven Rhododendron for a total of seventy shrubs in addition to the one hundred and thirty-two evergreen plantings. The landscape plan was reviewed and approved by the planning staff on June sixth, two thousand and fourteen. It was submitted, it was reviewed, it was approved. And the applicant, based on that approval, did the plantings and expended in excess of forty to forty-five thousand dollars to do that landscaping. Now, although the buffer area had deciduous trees, it did not have year-round screening Now, although the buffer area had deciduous trees, it did not have year-round screening from Jericho Turnpike. The plantings which the applicant has installed will provide such year-round screening. I have a photo, an aerial, which I would like to submit to the board, which shows the- Which shows the buffer area behind the canopy and the thirty-five-hundred-square-foot building that was previously used for tires and repairs, et cetera. This is the canopy, this is the repair building, and this is the buffer. As you will note, it is a very open area with very little screening for the residences to the north. There is no permanent evergreen plantings, there is just a line of trees.
What's the date of that, Mr. De La Cola? Do you know?
It's prior to, it's prior to the tanks being put in, installed. It is not dated, unfortunately, but I would have to say it is maybe the winter of two thousand twelve or thirteen, something around there.
So would, this would be before the trees that were taken down were taken down, correct?
That is correct. That is absolutely correct, because those, those trees that were taken down were damaged trees from Superstorm Sandy. There were six trees taken down that were dead and, and bending, falling, if you will, and there were a couple of trees where the large branches, they weren't really branches, I guess you would call them limbs, were removed because they were cracked. There was no mass land clearing. Now, when they put in the underground fuel storage tanks, and I believe the town took photos of that, the, the fill, I'll call it fill, when you dig out for the tanks, because these are forty-thousand-gallon tanks, two twenty-thousand gallons, I believe, or something, you had to, you had, the dirt had to go north. It couldn't go on Jericho Turnpike, it couldn't go under the canopy, so it had to go north into the, into the buffer, and if you will look, and that would be at the westerly side, there's a pool, if you'll see, if you look north, Mr. Chairman, on that photo, there appears to be a pool at any rate, and if you came straight down, there's a blue line. There is no, you know, there, there was, there was shrubs and things of that nature. Now, in the wintertime-
Okay.
-there may have been the deciduous trees filled in.
Excuse me, Mr. De La Cola?
Yes.
I've just been told that we have to stop and we have to change some-